Are we recording copies of the agenda? Um, Stuart, Stuart, um, indicating that we are recording. So how to get council resolution to provide recording of council meeting? Cause right now those people that were watching it, they didn't hear any dialogue. Yeah, I don't know. It's reaching out. So you have iPads? So Stuart confirming we're recording this council meeting?
Yes.
So if you have not, we'll continue on that way.
My mind is on my mobile device. That's L R C C. This is.
So something online. I probably want our scene.
Yeah, I would have that. That sounds really great.
Guys, I'll have news. There's a Chris Broce sitting in my office. They're not ready to go yet. So who does, who wants?
Well, I'll tell you please.
Gavin, do you got something?
I just want that one.
And Jim, you're okay?
Yes, I'm good.
Okay. I'll guess I'll get some surf pro bro.
We didn't get a C O motion for the report. We didn't get a report for C O report.
Okay, well, I guess we'll reconvene council at three forty P M. And noting that we'll be working with our R A G J N S. The central agenda is not working for us, but it is, we are being recorded as well. Okay, uh, we were finishing off the C O's report. Have you got anything else?
I know.
We need a motion to accept the C O's report.
Also, we'll accept that report.
Okay, thank you. On favor. Okay. Uh, move on. I guess the C O, I guess I'll speed on your E C C COVID night.
From an E C C perspective, one of the items we talked about the other day was did get some public complaints regarding the R A G. There's some, um, surface, just the one at that given time. Um, so we are ensuring that, uh, we're doing a couple of actions on capacity of the indoor skating facilities. We're going to monitor, making sure that people are compliant, in compliance with, uh, with the health restrictions. But we did have some public responses to excessive, um, demand on the facilities. So likely, uh, in the conversation tomorrow, we'll make sure the community needs to be minded of, of those activities and what's expected of them. Um, as we know that the government has prolonged the restrictions to, to January twenty first. Uh, and we've been, he's have just given time on when they will be announcing and reviewing those restrictions. Um, and that's really it. We just had quite a quick, quick meeting, um, on Wednesday. We continue to give everybody the, that's my report.
Any questions?
Your worship, too, the C O, it seems that the numbers have dropped quite a bit for our area, right? Didn't fail on Red Deer County South and.
Yeah, that's good news, sure.
Do you have a latest or?
I don't.
Yeah, okay. I think it was twenty or twenty one or something in our area. So I think you were telling us fifty one a few weeks ago, so that's, that's good news.
Yeah, I see the whole province is down, or yeah, the whole province is down to eight hundred. Some compared to almost two thousand, like they kick in the limitations, so I guess it worked. If there are any other questions of the E C C committee? Would someone like to move the report?
I'll move that report.
Thank you, Council Bates, on favor. Carrie, thank you. Council's action control. Any questions to that report? And would someone like to move that we adopt the reports or informations? Your worship, by some of this.
Thank you, Council.
All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay, we have the R F D regarding bylaw sixteen sixty one to twenty twenty one to amend the council procedure by law.
Thanks, your worship. This is just to change the procedure by law for the three o'clock council meeting start time. And we're looking for all three readings of the bylaw.
Okay. You're here to make a motion to give this first reading.
I will, your worship, all that we give first reading to bylaw sixteen sixty one, twenty twenty one to amend the council procedure by law sixteen forty six, twenty twenty.
Thank you, Council Barkley. Discussion. Council Hill? Okay. Maybe you want to back one o'clock. Okay, uh, we have a motion to give this first reading. All in favor of the motion? Carrie? Someone prepared to make a motion for second reading for this.
I'll move that we give this bylaw second reading, bylaw sixteen sixty one dash twenty twenty one.
Thank you, Council Bates, discussion. All in favor of the motion? Carrie? Would someone like to move that we give this third and final reading?
I'll move that we proceed to third reading.
All in favor of the motion? Carrie? Someone's prepared to make a motion for the third and final reading.
Yes, your worship, uh, I move that we approve third reading, uh, bylaw fifteen sixty one, twenty twenty one to amend the procedural by law.
Okay, thank you, Council Harrison. All in favor of the motion? Carrie? Thank you, Vanessa. Moving on to operational services, we have an R F D regarding fifty third avenue reconstruction.
Yep, uh, so in front of you, council is just the recommendation for award of the contract for fifty third avenue reconstruction. Uh, a little background about the project itself. So existing pipe is ductile iron, uh, sanitary mains, pipe is clay tile, uh, as well as we have a history of, uh, multiple digups on that roadway. Um, construction is consisting of replacement of water main, sanitary main, services to property line, as well as the road structure. Uh, similar to what we did last year on thirty eight, we are looking to just replace the roadway to hash out millings to allow for any settlements. For the remainder of the year, and then putting the project onto the paving in twenty twenty two for final surfacing. The project had fourteen bidders submit on December tenth. And lowest bid was to D B Bobcat, eight hundred thousand, seven hundred and thirty one and fifty five cents. Highest bidder, Standard General, was one point five, five, three million dollars, so quite a range in pricing. The tender evaluation was completed by Altera, uh, didn't see any outstanding and balanced items in comparison. It is a recommendation, uh, to award the contract to D B Bobcat. Uh, D B Bobcat is a general contractor based out of the home. They have about three years of experience starting with naming smaller projects, uh, doing site grading, basement excavations. Over the last several years, they have expanded the role construction and utility servicing. Um, the original design of the project, uh, was to include just a lining of a section of sanitary main that was directly underneath the sidewalk. But due to the competitive pricing, we had requested a price, uh, from D B Bobcat to include a scope change to replace all of the sanitary main completely. This would add an additional cost of forty nine thousand, six hundred and eleven and sixty cents. This would increase the total contract to eight hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and forty three, fifteen cents. Total project, uh, with engineering and contingency is one million, twenty one thousand, five hundred and fourteen and forty seven cents. This is under the budgeted number of one million, one hundred and twelve thousand. So it is our recommendation that council approve the award for fifty third Ave, uh, to D B Bobcat Services for the price of eight hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and forty three, fifteen, to be funded, uh, from the municipal stimulus programs. I'll take any questions.
I have, uh, the one question, I guess, we had talked, uh, Stephen about doing that extra block. This is put that extra portion right up to the art corner, doesn't that?
Correct, yeah, thirty seven all the way to forty first.
Yeah. Is that all I whisper? In the, in the works, if the budget didn't have to do that last block, you wouldn't have done it, but that's good. Okay? Any other discussions? Someone prepared to make a motion?
No, I don't know if you want discussion or motion, though. I'll make a motion that we proceed as recommended, and then I do have a question. So my question is, you had a bit of dialogue about them working their way up from smaller projects. They have done this size of project?
Uh, I have worked with D B Bobcat, but my understanding from Altera is they do have experience with this type of school with that contract.
So no concerns at this point.
So, yeah, I have no concern at this point, uh, with the contractor.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion? Carrie? Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Move on to, uh, an R F D regarding an sale of number thirty eight Napoleon Meadows Way.
All right, so we have received an offer, a purchase offer for thirty eight Napoleon Meadows Way, um, for a hundred and eight thousand dollars. The listed price for that lot is a hundred and nineteen thousand currently. Uh, thirty eight Napoleon Meadows Way is the last lot on the south, uh, south side of Napoleon Meadows backing into the green space that's available. Um, and administration is recommending that council approve the sale, uh, for thirty eight Napoleon Meadows Way at a hundred and eight thousand dollars for the offer to purchase.
Okay, uh, we're looking for a motion to, uh, accept this offer of a hundred and eight thousand dollars for lot number thirty eight. Someone prefer, prepared to make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion, your worship.
Thank you, Council Barkley. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion? Carrie, thank you. Six point two, R F D regarding curling, curling club facility lease.
Okay, so we're looking to present a request that was received from the Innesville Curling Club, uh, to consider the waiver of their twenty twenty one lease. Uh, the Innesville Curling Club has a lease through twenty twenty four with the town for the use and operation of the curling ring. The lease requires an annual payment of five thousand dollars and allows for the off season sublet of the facility by the curling club. Uh, the curling club has requested consideration of forgiveness as their twenty twenty one lease payment that is currently due. The club has experienced significant impacts due to the COVID nineteen restrictions on facility operations. Uh, the club usually receives revenue, uh, through the spring and summer, uh, from shuffleboard, as well as their regular bonds field play through the winter. Uh, the club took on significant expenses to open and meet COVID restrictions in the fall, only to be shut down in December. And even if restrictions are lifted, the curling season typically only runs until March. Um, so the curling club did pay their twenty twenty lease, uh, payment, um, but did experience very little revenue last year. So they didn't have the shuffleboard through the summer and then, um, the impacts this fall. So administration is recommending that council waive the five thousand dollar lease payment, uh, for the Innesville Curling Club for the twenty twenty one year.
Okay, someone prepared to make a motion to support that?
Yes, your worship, I would make that motion.
Okay. Thank you, Council Hill, discussion.
Uh, sir, is there something we could cover through the government? COVID money, could we? Is that what that's for?
Have you got any?
Your worship, to council, Rybaker. Yeah, take that into account. We, we have till March thirty first to spend that, that money, so it will go into the tally of the, of that COVID funding.
Good. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion? Carrie, thank you. Correspondents.
Your worship, to the director, Kennedy, I just want to say thank you for, um, adding Lakewood and fifty four to the Alberta transportation. And I think even that intersection, you know, there, there's, um, if you come off a little red deer to turn right on to, um, fifty four, there's, there's no lane to turn into. You, you turn into the traffic, there's no acceleration lane there either, so I don't know how long it takes for anybody to get back to you and, and, or how that review gets started. But, um, it was certainly a very terrible accident there. Somebody was airlifted out to Calgary.
And we did get a, pretty much the negative response from, from Mike in regards to having someone look into those intersections. So we did get a, yeah, quite a quick response.
That's great, thank you.
Yeah, it's been quite a number of pretty serious situations there, so. Anyway, someone prepared to make a motion, we accept these correspondence for information?
I'd say one of your worship, that is, accept, uh, correspondence and information?
Thank you, Council Harrison. Any further discussion on those? All in favor of the motion? Carrie? Council reports. Council Hill, are you prepared?
You, yes, I am, your worship, thank you. Uh, so, yeah, pretty well, just excited to get back, uh, back at it after our, our long extended, uh, break. Um, definitely have had a lot of really good things to hear about the, um, the outdoor rinks. And it is unfortunate that there, that there, uh, is obviously so well used that they're exceeding numbers in some areas. So, uh, the one question I did have for administration is, um, as far as the flooding schedules or how that all looks, wh- what would be a typical expectation from the public, from the administration, uh, as to how often they're flooded, when they're flooded? Uh, just, just for what would be feasible?
So typically what we do is flood them the first thing in the mornings, um, and then as it, it depends on resources. If we do get a second flood, we have been trying to, and we were building the first two months, uh, but it does have not the resources. Uh, but we do typically always have the first flood in first thing in the morning.
And that's Monday through Friday, is that correct?
Correct, Monday through Friday, yep.
Okay. And obviously, I, I, we just don't have the resources at this given time to, to look at a, cause that's, obviously when they're used the most typically would be on a weekend. Um, I can fully understand why, uh, you know, I was getting obviously a few complaints, because everyone tends to, right? With a lot of use, and then there, there's snow builds up and it's hard to play hockey and whatever else. But their, their question was, why is there any way it could be flooded on a weekend? And I asked them, but it's pretty resourceful, like it takes a lot of, uh, resources to do that. But, uh, I don't know if that has ever been brought up in discussions up till now.
Uh, no, it hasn't been brought up till now. We do, just base it on our policy of going Monday to Friday.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And that's all for me, your worship.
Council Beach?
Yeah, so same, just getting back at it, certainly did have a few questions from people about code of conduct. Um, I have a couple of questions, maybe I didn't get the memos. What's the status of the bus from Red Deer, your service?
Uh, the service has been extended through March, uh, so the bus will continue, uh, until March. And Karen will be here next week, I believe, with an update, um, on the, that activity as well.
Okay, thank you. And the other one, I've seen it for a couple of months, I think, a white Jeep Cherokee with Arbor metrics on it. And I'm wondering what does it, what's that all about? Does it mean?
Yes, your worship, I actually did stop the gentleman at the fast gas, ask what they do, and they're subcontracting by Ford is two, uh, vegetation control for power lines. And that's why they're in that, seem to be kind of in the Dodge area land.
Quite a few areas, and they sit there.
Yeah, it's vegetation.
I thought they were doing surveys.
Vegetation control is what it is.
Thank you. And that's all, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, last week, um, C O Becker and Stuart and I met with, um, President Tyrell Robinson and, and VP Devon Napp Singer, uh, from the chamber for two and a half hours. So it was an excellent meeting and, um, you know, a lot of it was focused on the thirteen ways. There was some concerns that, uh, there were specific dates put into that document and that, you know, some of the quick ones, i.e. swings, were, were going to be installed right away with, without kind of any consultations. So, um, we spoke about that a lot, uh, touched a little bit on, you know, if the chamber is able to gather any data as far as, like I mentioned earlier in the meeting, um, you know, what? The businesses that are impacted the most at COVID, you know, what are they missing? What, why are they slipping through the cracks of maybe some of these, um, government programs that are available? And, um, so I, I'm not sure if they've done some of that already in the previous few months, but I, I think that would be kind of interesting to, to see. And, uh, other than that, I, I know there was a bit in here about, uh, operations and keeping the, the walkways and everything clear. And so I'd like to say thanks for doing such a great job. I had somebody reach out to me today on the matter that's happening tomorrow. And they also mentioned that they were, uh, really pleased with, um, with Director Jenkins for, um, I think she's reached out to a few people on some grant money that is available, maybe through the, the Elemental Energy Fund and stuff. So they were really appreciative that, um, somebody would actually reach out to them. So, so thank you for that. Other than that, um.
Well, I haven't been up to anything. No, 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 I should drive. But now I can come on their tour course, because this morning, at the historical village, there was three people waiting and a fourth one chased the bus down just as it was leaving. So the bus was being used. And I noticed in the, the town hall's advertisement of their publicity of their eight outdoor rinks, it says, I didn't bring your own shovel and maintain it. So, but there's, we can, we can deal with that.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. But it was very quiet after this break, I didn't go anywhere, I stayed at home, put my feet up. Uh, I, two comments on outdoor rink, so again, more kudos to Stephen and the E C C and the Public Works guys for doing it. Um, upcoming, uh, this Wednesday, we have a community policing committee and are looking forward to, uh, counselor, county counselor, Pat Bowden coming to give a presentation on the, uh, initiative that she's been spearheading for a number of months. So we're really looking forward to that. And, uh, looking forward to twenty twenty one and, uh, going forth, we have a lot on our plate and it's, it's, uh, it's going to be positive and fun. Thank you, your worship.
Okay, thank you, Council Harrison. Yeah, I haven't done much either. Other than, of course, uh, taking a few phone calls and comments about, uh, various things. The, uh, I, I do, I do agree though, or don't, I guess you wouldn't say agree, but if we're gonna do outdoor rinks, uh, you gotta do them right. You can't just flood them if we're having a problem in the weekends. I did, uh, I made a point of going over to Sylvan Lake yesterday, uh, the wife and I went for a walk on Lake Shore Drive. And, uh, it was incredible, the activity on the lake, the whole, there's about three or four areas that are flooded for skating, one for hockey, and another one for, actually, two big ones, just for skating. But, uh, wow, it was unbelievable, the people there, but they did have a three man crew there flooding. They had a big tandem truck with water and another one with a heater on the back. And so, you know, it's, uh, doesn't come cheap to have that kind of facility. But anyways, uh, I just, I just think, you know, if we're gonna have, we've only got two or three outdoor rinks that, you know, we should be doing a, a proper job on them, but. I don't know what we even flood with anymore down on those outdoor rinks, uh, Director Kennedy, you got a, it's a spray bar or a tractor?
It is a tractor, I would have it behind a, a tank, uh, with a spray bar.
A lot of tanks, yes. Yep. Anyways, uh, I don't think I have anything else, other than I guess, should I mention that I do have the. That, uh, uh, I'm, uh, holding in my hand the signed resignation of Councilor Carrie from Town Council officially. And so today, so, uh, it'll be, uh, interesting, uh, from the community, but I'm sorry to see that Councilor Carrie couldn't make things work. And, uh, I think his heart's in the right place, but it just, it just, I guess, couldn't, uh, didn't like to work. So I'm not gonna say anymore. I guess there won't be any need for, uh, by election or anything with, uh, the main elections coming up here in eight months. Right?
Your worship, come back to the next raise of council meeting with, uh, with, with that direction and formal process.
Okay, thank you, Todd. So anyway, that's about it. Upcoming events, open mic, I'm sorry. Quickly going around the table, Stephen, have you got anything you want to mention, or Heather? Pegan? Karen? Stuart? Vanessa? Okay. Uh, assuming everybody had a quiet New Year's as we did. I, I made it midnight, the wife beat me to bed about two hours. But anyways, open mic, uh, most upcoming events. There is a mountain region of water. There is a Mountain Regional Water Commission meeting this Wednesday. And we're having quite a time with with the grant people when we did the twenty twenty eight million dollar project from Olles to Crossfield, twin down line, and we have gotten the last three million dollars of the grant, so. We didn't help spend the half million dollars in water, but we had down my vote, but it started to cut out of the cash flow a little bit. So we sent a request payment for the balance of that grant and got a letter back from Mr. Mackay, the new minister that department in term anyways, saying that they don't have the money and don't intend to, I think. We can do without it, and we've sent sent them a letter. No, 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 doesn't work that way. So we're in the battle on that regard. I won't say it, but I think blinking whistles too. Anyways. Yeah, I don't have any confusion there, but we'll report to that. I don't think I had anything else, but we have a meeting in Red City. So I guess if there's nothing else?
Just one big question.
Just on this meeting of council, again, staff, we'll indicate we have this recorded, although we have a policy regarding providing window copy. It would require a resolution of council, but I think to ensure your dedication to transparency, to make recording of the council meeting available through our website, I promote that into the community, it would require a resolution in that regard.
So we're, okay.
So we're not, like, we're not available to public. We are, we're not. I think the meeting, the requirements are MGA because the doors are open, but with COVID, you have an expectation to be available through digital virtual. So with a resolution and a direct registration to put promote the council meeting through through digital access, I guess, for public viewing.
I said whatever he just said.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
However, what's that?
It's the council meeting available through digital format.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Carrie? Just a question, your worship, when will it be available? Will it be available this evening or first thing tomorrow morning? Director, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, Council Harrison, I don't have an answer to that at the moment. Certainly it'll be as soon as as we possibly can.
Thank you.
Okay, nothing else, would someone like to move the, we missed two, actually, we missed up.
We didn't finish the upcoming events. I was going to actually say there is already our mug meeting on the twenty first. And so now I guess we need to motion that the upcoming events are accepted. No? Okay, so that's good, then we can, I wasn't done.
Oh, yeah. All right, those who favor the motion? Carrie? Oh, my goodness. Okay. Now I think you can entertain a motion to move in camera.
I will make a motion to move in camera.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Carrie? Take a couple minute break?